Survey Josh.
Jeremy, David, what do you have?
Four. I've got the request of the commissioners. I did a survey to all of them. These not just part of their things, you know, employees have different opinions. Had some complaints issues with people made thoughtful when we were aged over the hundred months. And most of us are closed for one hour. So what I did was just threw out some suggestions. I gave seven options for the employees to look at. They're all thirty-seven and a half hours. I have to break them. If you won the seven, what they confirmed, they think the taxpayer will. There are a lot of good comments. We sit here and read all of them, but I asked all employees to come to give their input. On my end, I definitely had more people coming around eight to wait for me than they do towards the end of the day. I'm not usually here Fridays if I am on one field, so I can't really talk about the Fridays and how busy they are or not, but. So if you look, I ranked them from what actually was most preferred, and it was that eight to four thirty, Monday to three, they have a half hour lunch. And eight to two on Friday with a half hour lunch. And in seven, actually, the least preferred is our current hours, eight thirty to five with the one hour of lunch.
There was no seven to seven with no lunch break option?
Well, I also put, I also, here's what was big.
Well, I guess, I mean, that's where twelve hours breaks are doing. I was curious. It seems like it wasn't put on.
Yeah, I had twenty, twenty-two people fill it out. I had a few that didn't fill this part out. They just wrote some comments on why they thought it wasn't a good idea to change it or. They just wrote what they preferred. So they said it was added up and the lowest score was most preferred. That's how I did that. So I guess if anyone else wants to come up and explain why they think they should go to the first one or whatever you think.
You'd find that the lowest score is the most preferred?
Yes. So I had everybody write one through seven or eight if they had another. So one is most preferred. So then I took everybody's adding them up for mine and the lowest number.
Like the lowest score wins confusing.
Yeah.
Right away, I was like, well, the lowest score wins, I'm making sense.
But.
Right. So what ended up being the most preferred?
The one that's number one on your list, the eight to four. I put them in order here.
Okay, so he gave us the summary of the results. This isn't a survey.
Nope, they don't get the actual results. So. And seven, I think, what was it? Seventeen people preferred a half hour lunch to the five that said no. They would buy the one hour lunch instead. So. So I gave a few options coupled with the one hour lunch there or ones where we start at eight instead of three.
So would this be the hours year round or is this more like a summer hours idea or?
I did it. I guess I didn't think about that when I did it. I just did kind of a year round thing.
Sure.
I guess we can see what people's opinions are on that.
I think it would be confusing if we're switching back and forth. I would have a year round.
Well, that's fine. I just, because I know some, there are some places that do like a summer winter hours. I don't really advocate for that because I think, like you said, I think. I think the hardest part about this would be just like any other business. I think you present your hours. There's a, there's a correction period. And then over time, most people will just kind of accept it. I, I think the way I've advocated for it in the past is. I just be careful of what you switch to. Make sure it's something that you're willing to stick to for a while. I don't want to switch it and all of a sudden in three months, we're like, this isn't working. I mean. Obviously, we can make changes, but it should be heavily considered before we make the change because it's gonna be. It'll probably be fine for ninety-five percent of people. There's gonna be some problems. There's gonna be some people that are upset about it. I, I have never really seen a problem with getting out early on Friday. And I honestly thought it was probably easier for people to get here earlier rather than later because. Sometimes people end up working later than they thought, but they generally don't work earlier. So usually if you need me to work by eight thirty or nine, if you can get in here by eight, you can still get your tabs or get your whatever. You know, where sometimes not everybody gets off at, you know, even if you're open until five thirty. They get out at five fifteen and they got a twenty minute drive, they're still not getting here where they could maybe get here early. So.
I guess I would advocate for definitely for the thirty minute lunch. It seems like it's just a lot more efficient for everybody as an employee. But definitely as a customer, we have a lot more customers or is service oriented if we're only closed for thirty minutes. That way, if they can come while we're closed, they don't have a very long wait.
Right.
And then I guess in our, our office or what I see, I'm usually here shortly after eight every morning. And there's a lot of times people waiting in the hall to get into a particular office because we do come earlier. Or in our office, we'll be requests to come earlier because maybe we have a tester. Or maybe we have, you know, somebody who wants to drop something off on their way to work or whatever. So. I guess from my standpoint, I would advocate definitely for thirty minutes and, and earlier.
I'd say twice a week, there's somebody waiting in the parking lot and you need thirty when I get there.
I had to wait for Josh the other morning.
Yeah, he was sitting outside after eight, like seeing who's coming in late because they found you opening at eight. So.
We had, probably had this fine listeners exemption, it's right in, probably had whatever, you had your jobs were overdue and.
Yeah.
You know, that happened one time and I never forgot.
I guess you did.
Because yesterday, we actually had somebody sitting in the hallway at four thirty. They should.
Yeah. Well, I, I think big back on kind of an earlier issue, like we talked about when it comes to employee recruitment and stuff like that, is the one thing that we're probably gonna have to realize too is. We're not always gonna be able to compete on salaries and things all the time too, but we can offer some other lifestyle. And I think adjusting the hours to make it so people are. Not only better served in the courthouse, but also employees will be able to more flexible schedules is, I think it's a good goal for us because I think it. It kind of offers another caveat to wanting to recruit people who are here. So, and I know. I've always heard that Fridays are usually closed now around here, especially in the summer, because most people are already by noon or headed out of town if they're gonna do something. I. I think if you're opening earlier during the week and offering those opportunities to get in here, then by Friday, by two o'clock, if you didn't get it done. You're just gonna have to wait till Monday, I guess. I don't think it'll be a problem. They will wait for a little bit. I don't think, I think people will adjust. I mean, I don't think you're.
We have the drop offices. They can drop stuff off for offices.
Right. And I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that schedule, I don't think that's anything like too ridiculous. So I think it's pretty reasonable. So.
Current hours now are what? From eight thirty to?
Eight thirty to five, basically, right?
And then you take an hour lunch? Yeah, I think that half hour lunch should probably be better for you guys too, right?
Well, I mean, offering a half hour lunch and then opening up a little bit earlier. I'd say earlier in the morning in lunch breaks are probably gonna be your busiest times for a lot of your, especially in your service type offices.
Yeah, if somebody came at lunchtime, now, now I gotta wait for a whole hour.
Well, and if they have an hour lunch break and there's only a half hour here, it's still probably squeezing. So.
Would you guys be against who will take the lunch break within your office if you get or is that a problem?
You know, it would be a problem like when Lisa's there by herself.
Okay.
If you say motor vehicles open from this time to this time, this time to this time, and she has to take a lunch break. We can't cover motor vehicle. We can cover taxes, though we can't cover motor vehicle.
Then you're the only one in that office?
Our deal is for time.
There's, there's times in the week where there's only one person.
And Josh.
So you do advertise over lunch and then it's the day when they're not there and then you get the frustration because you're better, you're better off to just be clear that it's closed for half.
Exactly. Or people will only.
And I would, I would argue the fact that if there's times where you guys got done a little early or maybe you skipped the lunch and someone hopped on the door, you're probably gonna take care of them. So. I'd say more often than not, you're gonna get more service than less during a half hour lunch. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I don't think you guys are standing at the door with your watch going, oh, one more minute. If you do like right here, so I don't think that's happening. So I. I don't know. I, I've always kind of advocated for a little bit more of a modified schedule because I think, I think it just helps out with our employee. And just our morale. And I think, I think people have adjusted to hour changes and stuff too. And I think, I think you're doing some give and take here. I think you're. You're putting a little bit earlier, but then at the same time, you're opening later and adjusting your lunch. And I think that's. I think you're gonna be offering the same, if not better, service. So that's my opinion.
We had a comment on, so if you guys would decide on the first option there, there was a comment about holiday. Like if a holiday was on a Friday, then, you know, you may not get your full seven and a half hours of holiday because it's only a. That'd be five and a half hour day, Friday. But I think that's. I mean, it'd be fine with, I think, a lot of people, because there's gonna be holidays on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever, that would be eight, yeah, three hours instead of seven and a half, you know. But I just don't know if anybody would really like that or whatever. But that's just one comment I see that would be a negative to the first option.
Wait, what?
It's Friday.
So typically, we're working seven and a half hours a day, right?
Exactly.
So we did it Thursday. If we go to the first option, it's actually a eight hour day. So we didn't get off earlier Friday.
Sure.
So with holidays on Friday, you're getting full seven hours off.
No, we're just five hours. That's what.
You're not getting seven hours.
And I did eight to two. So that's what I was gonna say. I don't think that'd be an issue because really it's like you're getting the day off and everything. It's a paid holiday and it's based on just your working schedule. It's.
A decade.
The best. Once you're two and a half, it's a holiday and just make it up around these parts.
So number one is the one that most people preferred?
Josh, what was the difference between the first on this and the second, the fourth? Is it significant or was it?
Between one and two, you mean? Gary?
Yeah.
So on the right of the score, so forty-two was that first option, sixty was that second. So. You know, that's added up.
So did they, so did the employees rank them though?
Yeah, they all ranked.
Okay, so they ordered out more than one hour.
They all, they all ranked one through seven. So.
So what was the significant difference?
Yeah, it is a, it's a huge red line slide.
But it's not really much.
Letting me go back to the second, not later start time. I hear a lot of feedback of giving that. And there are always.
More often than people coming in at the end of it. You would argue that the beginning of the day. And I, I would probably argue that too, but I mean, even this commissioner, they used to be ten, but I mean, if not, I think it's easier. It's a better part of the day, especially in the summer.
During the week. Three thirty and then it's.
So then like the. So with the DMV though, if you were done at noon, you're still working. That is the treacherous office, that's two of them or something, right? So you're, you're just not doing, but you happen to be doing DMV stuff past noon on Fridays, no matter what, anyway. So that's not really a change. But I mean, I would argue that's maybe the most popular, I mean, just data, data, some people, the feedback is that they work on bikes and they use it all the time. And so. I mean, obviously, all the offices are important, but people, a lot of people come into DMV. So as long as there's no major changes to that, I think. People seem to wait another day to pay their taxes, but they won't do it for their. If I had to wait another day, I'd be, oh darn. But I need my tabs, so if I have to wait anyway. So just kidding, Gary. So why would you want to take it back if that was the case?
So what I think we need to do, the change, we need to make for.
Right, that's what I did. Tomorrow would be like August first, tomorrow or something. You have to give it a.
Probably put that in paper or something. Two hours for the court.
Yeah, we're just telling them, dang it.
So what would you guys? First of July.
July first, if you were, it's only a month, it's a month, so it would give enough time.
Yeah, yeah.
July first might be tricky just because the fourth is on a Tuesday. So that first week, you already have a holiday on a Tuesday and then you can quit here on Friday, what we are, if you have like the. That's what I'm saying. I mean, it'd be a hard week to start doing it when you already have some Tuesday, then they come on Friday and it was early and I was. I mean, I just kind of maybe arguing for another week that doesn't have a major holiday in the middle of it. That would maybe be bad. They started to schedule a holiday now. So you think commissioners?
I'm okay with it.
Motion to adopt the new courthouse, courthouse hours effective July tenth. Commissioner really makes the motion. There are second on motion. Second if I commissioner home. Any more discussion on the courthouse hours adjustment? Change, modification. Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Courthouse hours officially changed to July tenth. Sheriff Sanders.
Good morning. Mike, I hope you're today. We just got to bring you up to date on staffing issues within the sheriff's office. And some of you were pretty much died short, was definitely short back in November, fall. We've been advertising statewide to fill that position. And applicants are extremely eager. I think eight applicants. Both six out of the eight that walked out. They're kind of backwards where one of the government backed out of the last period, spending first of all reason. And. Communicating with, with one other applicant that is not licensed. When I say they're not licensed, that means they're required to go to police academy, which is a thirty program. So pay their salaries benefits during that training. There's a commitment, there's benefits of that. So. And as of the end of this month, I'll lose the second deputy. Deputy Wright, that here is leaving. People work for the higher control, as did the other deputies that left here some time. And again, I think deputy Wright's taking a position to veterans, obviously, mentally and some other things like that. So. He's gonna be, so kind of the same story that I got as a group issue, it's solid before. Deputy Wright's gonna be gonna add a eighteen to twenty thousand dollar yearly. So same job. Same benefits, same job. But twenty thousand dollars starts. So we really need to look at that during. I know that legislators passed a earmark seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for agencies under ten officers. And that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars is gonna be distributed out to these different agencies that can be used for hiring bonuses or retention bonuses. But the details in that hasn't, I guess, that's probably gonna be burned to the ground in the office and then begin application processes and things like that. That won't be available till the lease pocket, sometimes small, more than thirty. So we're kind of, kind of back there. So again, we're everything to position. I don't, I guess, I really don't. It's just not good yet. Or just not there. We really need to look at that, this, this law as far as stuff. So try and be somewhat competitive on that side.
Well, I think we need to look at it now.
We do.
I know, I mean, I.
I know we're just starting that budget cycle now for the.
I know, but that's where, I mean, we're kind of up against the wall with a couple of these positions and we're running into, we're. It's kind of like the conversation I, I think I've had with all of you at some point is at some point, we're gonna have to be the bad guys and just. We're gonna have to break the typical Emmett County cycle. We're probably gonna have to. Just really reevaluate our pay scales because we're just not recruiting the people we need. We need to, we need to fill these positions. I mean, they're just. It just, it can't go on for too long because eventually you're gonna destroy the entire department. I mean, whether that's roads, treasury, and you're short employees and you're not filling their spots. It's because you're not meeting the demands of the market, obviously. I mean, I know the market's short and it's tough to find people, but. We should be finding more candidates than we are. So it's kind of glaring weakness that we're, we're probably a little behind in some areas. So.
You know, unfortunate that deputy Wright's gonna be with me at least through, you know, probably another couple of weeks reporting. You gotta move on. Given it's a very busy month for our office. We've got a lot of different things going on, community events, but also criminal investigations and things like that. Doesn't leave us much time for traffic enforcement issues. I reached out to the higher control, the current himself, major lieutenant. And to send them an email communicating then that our staffing issues and I need to see them down your homework for traffic enforcement on state highways. That's their responsibility and.
Well, they have health, they keep stealing ours. So I mean, they should be.
You know, just yesterday, I had a conversation with a citizen that's pretty upset where just some of the traffic stuff he's experiencing himself and. I agree with him for no passings and things like that. Don't, don't have the staff to be out there doing that between several processes, investigation, some of the other responsibilities we have. There's just not time. And in two weeks, it'll be down just to three of themselves and two other officers to provide that safety. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Somebody's gotta be available. We are the, in order for this county. There is a state that's called. Whether that's just citizen complaints, you're responding to accidents, or crimes and crimes against people, crimes against people. That's our responsibility. And that's what the focus is, to try and ensure that we say the, the issues we think to. We have prioritizing. So I'm hopeful by this fall, we'll have some, some applicants by this fall, if not sooner, and fill them as quick as I can. But it is a process. If I wanted to fill the position, we did it one body, could have done that already, but I don't. I've got to be careful on my selection. The responsibilities of the position and the authority of the position. I've been down that path earlier in my career and I think that mistake again. The wrong person in that position raises a lot of, sets a lot of credibility. So I have to be selected on who I pick. I've been fortunate the last five years, six years. I've had a group of good guys working for me. I haven't been hiring anybody in the last five and six years, but this last six months, it's not a lost half of my staff. So. Just because basically just moving on to bigger and better things. So.
So what, if the salary would have been better here, would have they stayed?
Deputy Wright could answer that. I mean, you know, he's, he's eighteen, twenty grand right out of, right out of the chute, right off the bat. You know, also, you know, the higher control, a larger agency is gonna offer more leeway laterally within the agency also than a small agency. But I think it's fair to say, deputy Wright, you know, you're not leaving because. It was a tough choice for him to make. It wasn't something he was eager to do. Phil Dab, apologize to me many, many times.
He should, David. You got some nice neighbors out there. And I told Gary the same time, if I didn't make the cut, it wouldn't be, you know, the stone's edge. I love working down here. I love the community. You know, I'm very involved in Hazleton. I'm on, I'm a beautiful judge up there. I do the ambulance down here. I mean, there's a lot of people I'm gonna miss down here. It was definitely a big thing. Pay really wasn't. You know, obviously, you're gonna make more money at the patrol, but there's a lot more I can move around if I want to go to Fargo. I mean, I'm gonna go to Wofford now. Is where I'm stationed at, but I can move around without having to get a new job. Different specialties I can get into, canine, drug interdiction, stuff like that. It's kind of my big thing. And the patrol has always been my game for me. So I'm very thankful to be, that Sheriff Sanders gave me the opportunity to be down here. It was a great agency to work for.
So we got you a cool ham and dog? Kind of what you're saying is you could be running down. I think I can speak for everybody to say thank you for your service in Emmett County. I mean, I, I can't say anything good about you. So. Whatever goes forward for you. It's probably a good opportunity for you anyway. That's great.
You can't fault the guy for trying.
No, no, like you said, if that was happening in the beginning, I mean, this is, this is, it's probably a little bit of a stepping stone.
It's already from something to stay with me until I retire and.
Yeah, see. Well, the, the, the idea of like recruitment training, like, you know, like to basically name for their. Training essentially and then bring them on for a dedicated number of time because they kind of have an obligation to you is that, I mean, that's something really.
You know, the patrol's had a pretty aggressive recruiting program. They do a bonus seventy to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, like twenty five.
So.
Twenty five, you're not gonna see it, twenty five.
But how long, how long do they have to stay then? Like.
Well, I mean, their retirement is, is, is much better too than the, than the current system we're in.
No, but I mean, if you go through a guy as well.
Do they have to stay for like five years if they?
Ten years, ten years before they're tested.
Oh, no, no. So that's all?
Someone coming out of the, after probation of one year and that keeps staying there for a year and if they stay there within that next year, it's appropriate.
Okay. So is that how it works here then too? Like with you, if you, if you send somebody to school, do they have to stay here for a certain amount of time or?
Well, you know, I, I did that years ago with a gentleman. I ended up firing him, dismissing him about. Four weeks, three weeks, four weeks into the academy for some conduct issues and, and some other issues. But I don't know if, you know, like I said, it's an investment, thirteen, fourteen weeks at the academy. You've got the equipment issues. You have body armor issues. You have benefits that you have to pay during that timeframe. And hopefully they make the academy, they pass the academy, they pass Iowa one year probationary period also, and they pass that. But I don't know that you can, you know, in previous years, I discovered the fact that if we take that chance to send you to the academy till they get their piece of their license. That once, you know, they graduate on Friday and usually they're saying, sayonara, bye, I took a job with another agency. Thanks for the certificate. Thanks for the training. See ya. I don't know that any contract would bind them to stay here for any length of time. You'd probably end up in court. Joe, probably you better answer that. Trying to get that, recruit that car back, present it through the academy and so forth. Years ago, it was a problem at the training academy where officers were there for their agency and halfway through the academy, they landed another job somewhere with a different agency. And the academy put stop to that. If they find out that you're there working for a specific agency. And you have to be in uniform when you attend the academy, but yet you apply for, you take a job, they get you out of the academy. Because it was getting too prevalent for that. So they won't, they won't allow you to attend the academy.
We have a phone call coming in at noon?
Okay. One other thing I'm gonna talk to you about is patrol vehicles. The business literature will be coming out in about two weeks. It's been a mess in scope with trying to get vehicles. We just finally got marked for place and it took a year to get that car. So in about two weeks, I'll get it done. We've got budgeted for one replacement car this, this year in twenty twenty-three. But I'm tempted to try and purchase two vehicles because delivery date, even if we order one in the next month or two, delivery date won't be till late fall. For a pair after the first year. And the attention care actually. Cycle, these salaries, obviously, if you're based on, once we hit that thousand, that's it. We bump that out, we replace transmission armories, suspension parts, sharing, all that stuff. So it's, I'd like to keep them on there.
Well, I guess I was just gonna merge you, come back at one thirty. Discussing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Part of the pay scale stuff is it's just been open ended. So if you want to continue this.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. This is David. This is Brian. Thank you. Who's supposed to call?
He's calling me here, yeah, Steve.
Same old, sorry, time.
I think specifically he was gonna talk about paragraph four, bottom page two. Is, uh, when I talked to him on the phone, he, he, he was just saying, and I'm sure he'll describe it better, but he felt like the job of ripracing the west side and adding the gravel was incomplete as far as what the county's obligation was, that was his point. I felt like it wasn't finished or there wasn't enough rock, and I think, uh, he had hired Russ Lawler to do the other side, and he said that side is still intact, but our side had problems, so that's what he was gonna call about, and then I think the photograph that he included there is him standing on what would be the county's side, and I think there's kind of a washout there, and he had added some extra rock too, but I believe. I'll let him talk about that.
Here, we driving into people's driveways and plate them again.
When we at the time?
This Rick Seymour called me from down by.
By the state line though?
Yeah. And he was wondering, he said they always came in and played a little bit, he was wanting to take, still get that done.
Stuff that's not looking very good, so.
They answered right now, and no.
I can say that would.
Straightforward, no. So there'll be twenty-five people here, one, maybe.
Well, we just have an obligation to get a neighbor outside, right, and all, because that's the plan too, is we're gonna start putting plates on, on the other route.
Yeah. They started moving, just to move south or the north down there. So. Then it rains and they mess it up down there, then they gotta go back.
Well, the trouble is that that area is actually, they got an old strain on everybody, that, that west of Lincoln, south west of Lincoln is just, I mean, I feel bad. Since they've got a lot of rain, but that was pretty isolated, that area, I was just down there at eighty-second off eighteen oh four. Road's actually in pretty decent shape, but there's a few gravel spots that they're missing, and then there's a few washed spots off the hills, because in that one stretch, I think they got four inches of rain in two days, I mean, just, they got like an inch and a half followed by like two and a quarter, it just, I mean.
Yeah, so there's still probably still, you know.
Well, right in that area, especially that far out, but eighteen oh four, yeah, they haven't taken one since, so, I mean, that's.
So those that are washed out, all the. It's gonna be worse though.
Right. Well, like you said, the, that's the troublesome part, it's like, where do you get gravel, where do you get material, it's all wet, I mean, I got stuck in, in someone's yard yesterday, like in their gravel driveway, it's just that wet, stopped.
It's hard to believe that it's not that far away.
I had my truck a max period, the road was nice and dry, made it right in, it was dust on the road, pulled into his yard, we stopped and looked at the job we were gonna do. I thought, well, just pull ahead a little bit, and my truck settled in the ground that hard, and I had to rocket to get out of it, just a little bit like twenty feet. And it's just soft, it's just, you run a gravel truck or something like that?
A weak gravel. Uh, yeah, we have a third, uh, we have.
I think we have a lot of trucks in the.
So what are the chances that you may have been able to find that truck, that you keep it in mind?
What's your plan as far as strategy? There's gonna be a group of guys coming into the pot, maybe, unless you're all there.
Oh, we're gonna discuss that out. Like, that's, that's a smart, you can tell you this.
I called down to the office, just make sure that.
I look down, Ross, down there, like, David, like.
Yeah, they asked me this one picture, still, still wanting, first time airboat.
That a lot.
I don't know who it comes from, like.
I shouldn't, and it's from right top row.
I don't want their names programmed in the pool, said five photos. This is the first time you're able to know, maybe, so, yeah, I mean. We're short staffed, we're, is this, around here?
Yeah, Rick Seymour and, um, Carter Van DeWolfe, David Wright and all them guys down.
I went down there yesterday from one o'clock until seven thirty last night, or they. Written out all these roads, they need gravel, and some of those roads haven't been touched in the way yet since this last winter, they're a disaster. I mean, there's, there's people that are upset, I don't blame them.
Well, I don't, I feel that, I form too, I don't, I mean, I'm not up here sitting, we're doing a great job, we're, we're struggling, we're, we're not even keeping our head above water anymore. We were treading voluntarily, now we're surrounded.
Have you, uh, looked at that no where we're out here, out west of town?
Edward Noa. Would it be, uh? Hundred thirty-two.
Yeah, there's.
Fourth, fourth half, no. I think it was blocked real.
There's those gray vans right on the south side, uh, fifteen going out west, and it's about a mile west of Ariel South. Well, about halfway I'm down there, there's a most spot, I drove down there the other, last week, and there's three really bad, fucking nettles.
It's terrible.
And then he was talking about, uh, he said, you know, you heard. I thought, maybe you wanted to talk to him, it sounds random, saying about foot tires or something, and they're trying to. There's three really sad, most spots.
Yeah, there's a bunch of bad spots out towards the. And we'll look at some. Different, some of those, and, now, those are ten years, ten year old spots that are still dealing with.
Yeah, birth town yourself, west, I don't know.
My God, colors, Francis Grayville, colors on that one that he promised five years ago, that still haven't been done.
Five years. Lot of major.
Yeah, like, was fixing one up there and waiting out where he said I can't do another one over there and.
It's part of.
Yeah, like. Can't squeeze, can't squeeze blood out of the turnip.
Yeah, well, doesn't seem like Bob's calling in or something, so I think we'll break for lunch and we'll come back at one fifteen. When recessed at one fifteen.